And business meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred North Broad Street. And pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. Once again, welcome to the Elizabeth Board of Education meeting, present here and everyone here present at school fifty-one. And to all our television viewers and people viewing us on live stream to this July twenty-fourth meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. So that the recordings will adequately reflect the proceedings. Please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We ask that you silence the sounds on your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. There is a public portion for the citizens to address the board. Participants of this public portion must personally sign in prior to the start of the public participation portion so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The signing sheet states the name, address, and telephone number and the reason that person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. We are pleased that you have taken the time out this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Batelus. Carvalho.
Present.
Chevrez. Jacobs.
Present.
Maureen Ortega. Encalves Bustana.
Present.
Rivera. Naron.
Present. Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here. As we are in Elizabeth Public School community, we've had a lot of loss in our district. And I want to take a moment to have everyone please stand for a moment of silence. We did not lose one or two. We lost six staff members of Elizabeth Public Schools community. First, Marie Innocent Moreno from our food service department over at George Washington School One. Brenda Griggs, CDA over at school number five. Paul Williams Ewing, our former social studies teacher. Theodore Christos Pentagopoulos, father of Theodore Pentagopoulos over at JBJ STEM. Robert Patrick Stigliano, former investigator at the Mitchell Building. And last but not least, Ms. Carolyn Marie Payne, retired security guard from school number twelve. Our hearts and prayers go out to their families and many condolences from the Elizabeth Board of Education and the Elizabeth community. Please remain standing for the presentation of colors. We're going to omit that. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by board member Vice President Maria Carvalho.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Barbosa will read our pledge of ethics.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. You may be seated. Again, good evening, and we apologize for the delay of the start of this meeting. At this time, citizens may address the board. Microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. The following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or name-calling of individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. First, we have Ms. Maria Lorenz from City of Elizabeth.
Good evening. Good evening. I come here today to speak on the policies which the board has decided to bastardize this evening into the second reading. The first one would be that of the CPAC. Now, I am actually still waiting for the GRC along with Mr. Cologi to be given a date to discuss this. Because the reason we went into this was because of everything that was wrong with the policy. But this board decided to further bastardize, adulterate, degrade, and debase the CPAC policy. And I'll tell you how. You prefer that the underserved and underprivileged, low-income members of our community pay a fee to a PTO or a PTA to be part of one organization to join another. Now, I understand that our Madam Superintendent, Ms. Hugelmeier, may have selective amnesia. But I spoke on that very same policy a few years ago. And I asked each and every single one of you, how many of you felt comfortable disclosing a health condition such as AIDS or herpes in order to get treated for something else? And the response was none. Not one hand. You're asking our community to spend money to be part of a PTA to join a CPAC, which, by the way, is free of charge. So you took that policy and bastardized it. That's what you're putting into it. Discriminatory, tried, tested, and taken out previously. But all of you seem to have selective memory, or at least some of you that were still here. You, Mr. Naron, were a part of that, so you understand. Maybe you may not remember that speech. I refer you back to that YouTube video. The Director of Special Services to pick for out-of-district students, defining other parental organizations. Please define for me what another parental organization is. How do our out-of-district places know that they should be aware of this policy or have an organization to refer names to you? The only time the Director of Special Services knows a parent is when we take you to court and sue you and win. In addition to that, I want to understand how will the schools would be notified? Are you allowing outside organizations like Elizabeth Parents and Students Care to do that? In terms of the INS, you gutted transparency by informing parents who is a member of the team, characteristics of an effective team, professional development, parental involvement. All of these things you took out of that policy. How much more are you going to take away from the community? It's my question to you as a board member. And, Mr. Naron, I understand that you're running for freehold, and maybe you don't care. But the rest of you that are here should care. Because I guarantee you this, and I will tell you this. If any of these policies go through, I will make it my personal mission to take you to court and sue you on every single change. Because what you're doing to this community is unfair. You're not serving the community, you're serving yourselves. You're serving yourselves by serving as board members to use it as a springboard to other positions.
And to all our television viewers and people viewing us on live stream to this July 24th meeting of the Board of Education, we are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of Elizabeth Board of Education Permanent Record, so that the recordings will adequately reflect the proceedings. Please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We ask that you silence the sounds on your electronic devices, since it is legally mandated that these procedures be accurately recorded. We may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. There is a public portion for the citizens to address the board. Participants of this public portion must personally sign in prior to the start of the public participation portion, so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The signing sheet states the name, address, and telephone number, and the reason that person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. We are pleased that you have taken the time out this evening to join us here for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Battelus. Carvalho.
Present.
Chevrez. Jacobs.
Present.
Marie Ortega. Encalves Bastana.
Present.
Rivera. Naron.
Present. Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here. As we are an Elizabeth Public Schools community, we've had a lot of loss in our district, and I want to take a moment to have everyone please stand for a moment of silence. We did not lose one or two. We lost six staff members of Elizabeth Public Schools community. First, Marie Inosant Moreno, from our Food Service Department over at George Washington School One. Brenda Griggs, CDA over at School Number Five. Paul Williams Ewing, our former Social Studies teacher. Theodore Christos Penagopoulos, father of Theodore Penagopoulos over at JVJ STEM. Robert Patrick Stigliano, former investigator at the Mitchell Building. And last but not least, Ms. Carolyn Marie Payne, retired security guard from School Number Twelve. Our hearts and prayers go out to their families, and many condolences from the Elizabeth Board of Education and the Elizabeth community. We're going to omit that. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Board Member Vice President Maria Carvalho.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Barbosa will read our Pledge of Ethics.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. You may be seated. Again, good evening, and we apologize for the delay of the start of this meeting. At this time, citizens may address the board. Microphones are open for public comment. To those who have signed in prior to this session, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. The following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or name-calling of individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. First, we have Ms. Maria Lorenz from City of Elizabeth. Good evening.
Good evening. I come here today to speak on the policies which the board has decided to bastardize this evening into the second reading. The first one would be that of the CPAC. Now, I am actually still waiting for the GRC, along with Mr. Cologi, to be given a date to discuss this, because the reason we went into this was because of everything that was wrong with the policy. But this board decided to further bastardize, adulterate, degrade, and debase the CPAC policy, and I'll tell you how. You prefer that the underserved and underprivileged, low-income members of our community pay a fee to a PTO or a PTA to be part of one organization to join another. Now, I understand that our Madam Superintendent, Ms. Hugelmeier, may have selective amnesia, but I spoke on that very same policy a few years ago, and I asked each and every single one of you, how many of you felt comfortable disclosing a health condition such as AIDS or herpes in order to get treated for something else? And the response was none. Not one hand. You're asking our community to spend money to be part of a PTA to join a CPAC, which, by the way, is free of charge. So you took that policy and bastardized it. That's what you're putting into it. Discriminatory, tried, tested, and taken out previously, but all of you seem to have selective memory, or at least some of you that were still here. You, Mr. Naron, were a part of that, so you understand. Maybe you may not remember that speech. I refer you back to that YouTube video. The Director of Special Services to pick for out-of-district students, defining other parental organizations. Please define for me what another parental organization is. How do our out-of-district places know that they should be aware of this policy, or have an organization to refer names to you? The only time the Director of Special Services knows a parent is when we take you to court and sue you, and win. In addition to that, I want to understand how will the schools would be notified? Are you allowing outside organizations like Elizabeth Parents and Students Care to do that? In terms of the IRNS, you gutted transparency by informing parents who is a member of the team, characteristics of an effective team, professional development, parental involvement, all of these things you took out of that policy. How much more are you going to take away from the community? It's my question to you as a board member. And, Mr. Naron, I understand that you're running for freehold, and maybe you don't care, but the rest of you that are here should care, because I guarantee you this, and I will tell you this. If any of these policies go through, I will make it my personal mission to take you to court and sue you on every single change, because what you're doing to this community is unfair. You're not serving the community, you're serving yourselves. You're serving yourselves by serving as board members to use it as a springboard to other positions that get you paid, and that is a shame.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Don Lorenz from Elizabeth. Good evening, Ms. Lorenz.
Hey, how you doing? Okay, so on most of your desk, there's a flyer for Jersey Lanes. September's starting up. Schools expensive, so is college is expensive. Jersey Lanes has a program for children from four to seventeen. They have a league on Saturday for kids. You can join up. It also, if you start early enough, let's say age four, by the time you hit seventeen, you can actually run away with a full scholarship to most colleges. I've seen a lot of kids there to have a full scholarship to many different colleges. If you join at a late age, you might have some money for books, sort of say, but everybody kind of wins in the league. So that's something to look into. Pass around the info. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kason Little from Elizabeth. Good evening, Mr. Kason.
Good evening. As we enter the new school year, I want us to move with clarity and courage around an urgent topic, dismantling the harsh punitive discipline systems that exist here in Elizabeth, that disproportionately target Black students, and replacing them with approaches rooted in equity, restoration, and justice. For far too long, Black students have borne the brunt of exclusionary practices like suspensions, expulsions, and unnecessary referrals to law enforcement. These practices do not serve our children, they criminalize them, and they widen the very opportunity gaps we claim to be working hard towards. This year, we must shift that narrative, and here's how. First, we must train every staff member from the front office to the classroom on implicit bias, trauma-informed practices, and restorative justice, something we've been speaking about for the last over five years. This is not a one-time workshop, but an ongoing transformation of culture and climate. Second, we must implement school-based restorative circles, peer mediation, and healing spaces that allow students to be seen, heard, and supported, and not punished and pushed out. Third, we must revise our code of conduct to eliminate vague, subjective categories like willful defiance that often lead to disproportionate discipline of Black students. Instead, we must ground discipline in context and care, and in accountability that is developmentally appropriate. Fourth, we must partner with parents and community to co-create a shared vision of school safety, one that is in the best interest of our students, and that does not prioritize policing or punishment, but on connection, support, and belonging. And lastly, we must track data to hold ourselves accountable, from the superintendent's office on down, to ensure that every student matters, but if our policies are harming Black children, they must change. We must have the courage to say that clearly and act boldly. We're not just talking about discipline, we're talking about dignity, we're talking about justice, we're talking about the future of our children. Let this school year be the one where we did not just listen, but we led, and I yield back my tongue.
Thank you, Mr. Little. At this time, this ends the public portion of our meeting. Thank you for all who have signed up and for your comments this evening. At this time, I want to turn the floor over to our Superintendent of Schools, who will present community updates.
So we would like to be able to begin with our 2025 Elizabeth Community Health Fair that is scheduled to take place on July 27th, sponsored by Desfile y Festival Dominicano del Condado de Union, a Hispanic Association of Professionals that focus on health. The Elizabeth Community Health Fair will be taking place on Sunday, July 27th, this upcoming Sunday, at Juan Pablo Duarte José Julián Martí School Number Twenty-Eight, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For years, this community health fair has been held and provided members of our Elizabeth community with free health information screenings, including those related to prostate cancer, diabetes, high blood pressure, cholesterol, vision and dental issues, nutrition, and psychological issues. Registration is required for the event, and for more information, you can certainly refer to the flyer that has been circulated all throughout and shared on social media outlets, and also being shared via text with all of our families. Next, we have our World of Summer Programs, and we're going to be sharing the end dates. It's been an enjoyable summer thus far, so on July 23rd, we have our Rising Kindergarten Literacy Program for our kindergartners that will be coming to an end, as well as our Summer Arts Institute for our children in kindergarten through eleventh grade. And also, on July 25th, we will have our CTE Summer Camp coming to a close that included our middle school students in grades six to eight. We also have this upcoming week, week of July 30th, our programs will be ending for our spell newcomer multilingual learners, children in K-3, our Promotion and Retention Program for our K-8 students, our Extended School Year Program for our pre-K through 12th grade special needs students, and STEAM for our newcomer multilingual learners in grades four to eleven, our ESL Enrichment Program for kindergarten through eleventh grade, our Summer School Remediation for our high school students, as well as the Advanced Credit Program. And lastly, the Apex Learning Program will also be coming to an end on July 30th. And next, we have our JROTC Program ending on the last day of the month, July 31st, as well as the New Joint Orientation that will also be taking place on this date. And then in August, we have our Youth Athletic Program ending on August 1st, our High School Sports Camps ending on the 7th, and our Special Needs Recreation Program for students in grades one through eight, ending on August 8th. We have our Summer School High School Graduation Ceremony that will be taking place on July 31st, and that will take place at our Elizabeth High School French-Ae Cicerone Academy in the auditorium. Very excited to be able to host our students, and working very, very hard this summer, and will be graduating. And also, for our community, wanted to be able to share that during the week of August 18th, we will be sharing our Welcome Back Letters that will be issued by each of our respective schools from our principals with very important information with regard to back-to-school night, welcoming our families to our schools, to the new school year, and a variety of other updates that will also be included in the communication. Next, also as a reminder to our parents, that our Power School Student Schedule Accessibility for our new year, 2526, will be on Monday, August 18th. So be able to access your students' schedules, find out who their teachers will be for the upcoming school year, and before we know it, September will be here. And then also, wanted to be able to include this information on an annual basis, wanted to be able to share the steps for contacting your child's teacher on Power School. We're going to be posting this presentation on our webpage, and we'll also be sending a letter home to all of our families that will include this information on how to access Power School, and most importantly, how to communicate with your child's teacher. So there's a few steps that are involved, and we're posting those steps on our webpage.
Madam Superintendent.
Yes.
Can I approach you for a second? So I just want to comment on Power School, if we can go back, and I want to implore parents to really take the time out to understand Power School, log on to Power School, because oftentimes I hear parents say, hey, they don't know the progress of their child, or what's happening in school, and the information is right there. So it is vital that you, you know, just like you fill out their application, you put the emergency contacts, that you really pay close attention to Power School to keep a day-to-day update on your child. You're able to track their attendance, their grades, if they're failing, if they're progressing, if they're doing well, and it's a good way for you to really keep a measuring tool as the progress that your child is making or not making. And that tool is right there for you, and I think far too many parents are not using the tool, so please make sure, if you don't understand it, that you reach out to your principals, your teachers, and that you connect with them, and please don't let this just be something that goes in one ear and goes out the other, because again, I hear too many parents say, I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know, and all the information is on Power School, and all of it is logged in, you're tracking the attendance, you track tests, you can get the report card ahead of time, you can, you know, and you can work with your child to make any improvements necessary. So I really just, I didn't want to gloss over that, I think we needed to really hone in on that, so everybody gets it.
And, Mr. Naron, you're making a very valid point, because years ago, the focus was on ensuring that every parent had a Power School account, right, when it was first rolled out. But most important is for our parents to be able to track their children's progress, as you stated, and their attendance, so it's important that we work with all of our parents to understand the capability of the system. So thank you, thank you so much for mentioning that. Important updates also for our students that were in sixth grade, T-DAP and Minactra is required. Those vaccines are critical before the first day of school, which is going to be September 4th, so it is critical that our students have these vaccines before they enter. And then, as a follow-up to that, wanted to be able to share that the City of Elizabeth has their back-to-school annual vaccination event that is going to be coming up soon. They'll be hosting this event on Monday, August 25th, and as you can see on the flyer before you, at 418 Palmer Street, from 4:30 to 6:30. This is a free immunization event, and it's for our Elizabeth sixth-grade students, as well as our eleventh-grade students. It's by appointment, and all Elizabeth residents are eligible. These flyers will be posted on our webpage, and I want to be very clear, the residents that are eligible, have Medicaid Family Care Part A only, or are uninsured, are able to take advantage of these free vaccines. Once again, it will be held on August 25th, and it's important, we've been sending communications out through our nurses, and it'll be included also in our Welcome Back Letter to our families. Another opportunity for our parents is the City of Elizabeth Department of Health and Human Services is offering a free immunization clinic. This is by appointment only, once again, to our eligible residents aged two months to eighteen years old, and we want to ensure that our families have access to this information, ensure that our children are safe and sound. And we now move to our Inside EPS, our News from Central. We sent out a press release last week announcing that our very own, our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Judy Finch Johnson, had been named the NJSI-A Executive Committee President. We are incredibly proud of Mrs. Finch Johnson, of this amazing opportunity to lead NJSI-A. So we want to congratulate her once again on this tremendous honor, and look forward to her having an amazing year. And I just want to extract from the press release a little bit about Mrs. Finch Johnson. Her connection to athletics traces back to her college days, when she played organized basketball for the first time at Union County College, presently Union College of New Jersey, and eventually at Trenton State College, presently the College of New Jersey, where she held a school record for rebounds for thirty-seven years. Mrs. Finch Johnson would eventually become the Athletic Director of Elizabeth Public Schools, a position she held for eleven years, overseeing several state championship teams in multiple sports. She moved into central administration as an Assistant Superintendent of Schools, but stayed connected to athletics through her service with the NJSI-A. Incredibly proud of Mrs. Finch Johnson.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to take a second to acknowledge Ms. Johnson and give her a round of applause for that amazing accomplishment, that she's the president of NJSI, so I'd like to start off a round of applause. Thank you. Proud that one of our own is now the president. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
We'll do it when she's here, too.
Yes, she's enjoying a well-deserved vacation this week. And next, we turn to School Number Twenty-Eight, who won first place in the Sustainability Jersey for Schools Decade of Impact Instagram Video Contest. So School Twenty-Eight was awarded first place. This contest was created to commemorate the ten-year anniversary of the Sustainable Jersey for Schools Program, and the school was awarded $1,500 for their first-place finish. School Twenty-Eight was one of thirty-eight New Jersey public schools and districts selected to receive this grant funded by the New Jersey Education Association, and at a ceremony at the College of New Jersey. This is an opportunity to fund an outdoor classroom, as well as science resources, so we certainly congratulate School Twenty-Eight for pursuing this opportunity and coming in at first place. It's fantastic. And with that, we end our community announcements. However, I'd like to now turn my attention to our Director of Research Evaluation and Assessment, Mrs. Amy Gill, who will be providing a presentation on our data that we received from the New Jersey Department of Education, on the NJGPA, as well as our access data for our multilingual learners. So I'm going to turn my attention now. Mrs. Gill, thank you. I'm just waiting for the clicker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I am pleased to share with you our students' performance on the NJGPA and the Access for Ls from the spring of this past school year. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment is the assessment used as one of the requirements for graduation from high school. Students take the NJGPA for the first time in March of eleventh grade. This year, we administered the NJGPA to nearly 2,100 students. There are only two scoring levels of this assessment, not graduation-ready and graduation-ready. If a student is deemed not graduation-ready in ELA, math, or both, they will have other opportunities to retake the assessment up to two times, and they can also utilize other proficiency assessment measures, such as the SAT, the ACT, and other options that are available to them. Performance in Elizabeth, as well as the state of New Jersey, as you can see on this slide, is obviously better in ELA than it is in math, and in each of the two content areas, we're trailing state performance by approximately ten percentage points. You see those same discrepancies between ELA and mathematics in all of our demographic groups that we serve in our district. The next assessment I will present this evening is the Access for Ls. All multilingual learners are assessed on their English language acquisition with this The Access for Ls is administered to all multilingual learners from kindergarten through grade twelve. The students are assessed in four different language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Each student also receives an overall score that is a combination of those four domains. Performance is reported on a six-point scale. Access scores are used to determine the best placement for a student in the next school year, including whether or not the student is ready to exit from receiving multilingual learner services. There are several different versions of the Access for Ls, and they are all administered based on the student's grade level. The average score for each domain is shown here, reported by the grade band that are assessed together. Kindergartners are assessed by the teacher using paper-based materials in a one-to-one setting. Students in grades one through three are assessed online for the listening, reading, and speaking domains, and they use a paper-based booklet to complete the writing domain because of their limited typing skills. Students in grades four through twelve complete all domains online. This year, we administered just over 200 more Access for Ls tests than we did last year. Despite the increase in the number of multilingual learners we are servicing, the performance, as you can see, is very similar to what it was in 2024. It's important to note that these average scores are inclusive of students who have recently arrived in the United States, to students who have been here for several years. Access scores are not reported as pass rates, but rather as progress toward English language And finally, multilingual learners with significant cognitive disabilities are also required to participate in the Access for Ls using an alternate version of the assessment. Like the kindergarten version, it's administered to students individually and using paper-based materials. Because of the limited number of students who participate, the data above is not broken out by grade level, but just by out by grade level, but just by proficiency level. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gill, for the update and the progress that we've seen and the work that we will continually do here in our district. So again, thank you so much, and a lot of good news and a lot of transparency there on the work that we have to do. At this time, want to review the agenda. 1A Official Private Minutes of June 12th and the 17th, 2025. Agenda item 1B Treasury Secretary Report, May 31st, 2025. To our board members, are there any questions and concerns from the board? If there are no questions, seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add items 1A and 1B to the agenda. Thank you. Personnel report, are there any questions from the board for tab 2A? If there are no questions from the board, Mr. Kennedy, please add tab 2A to the personnel report. Add the personnel report to the agenda, tab 2A. Tab 3, Tuitions Report, any questions from the board?
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner.
On Tuitions Reports, just...
What page?
Page, this one's, page 1. Well, it actually applies to all the pages. I, I see that certain, and I always question this, are there certain out-of-district schools that request payment, is it at the end of the school year, or do we pay for the children to be at the beginning of the school year?
Mr. Kennedy?
We pay each month, based on, we get the attendance records for the student, and based on the yearly tuition, it's divided by the number of months in the school year for the out-of-district tuition.
So it's month, so it's monthly?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And it then, because I know that we keep a track of their attendance, you, right?
Each district, each out-of, yeah, each out-of-district school provides the accounts payable department with the attendance of the students. So they do a match to make sure the kid is going to school, and then based on that, they're, go forward with paying the monthly invoice for tuition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy.
Are there any additional questions to Tuitions Report? Seeing none, hearing none, please add tab 3 to the agenda. Tab 4 to 4D Superintendent's Report, are there any questions or comments in regards to the Superintendent's Report? Seeing none, hearing none, please add tabs 4, 4D, to the Superintendent's Report. Tab 5, Authorizations Report, are there any questions from the board in regards to tab 5? If there are no questions or comments to tab 5, please add tab 5 to the agenda.
One, one comment, Mr. President, if I could. In authorizations, there's the school lunch price listings, and just to point out to the board that the same prices we charge this year in 2425 are going to carry forward to 2526 with no increase.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
So, Mr. Kennedy, when was the last time we raised just lunch prices? It's been a couple of years now, correct?
This is the fourth year with no increase.
Fourth year?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Tabs 6, 6A Finance and Accounting Reports, are there any questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. I think this one's for Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, so I see that our medical insurance starts, right? Medical, dental, and the prescription starts July as well.
Are you looking at a dollar amount on tab 6, or?
Because I see tab 6, the authorization to pay vouchers. I see that it's on here already.
Yeah, those are the, the last payments for June. And as you know, we renewed our prescription and health insurance in its effect of July 1 through June 30 of the, of the next year. So you'll see the July billing for prescription and, well, for prescription on next month's claims list. We renewed the prescriptions and it, through our broker, we did fairly well compared to what you've been reading about in the state of, which is over 30% at the state. Our prescription, based on usage of prescription that had been filled, went up 15%, but health was very good and only went up 6% this year. So comparing the job that our broker did to, to the results that we were seeing, that the state health benefit plan is going to be paying starting January 1st, we think if they, they increased, yes, but I think they increased less than a lot of people were expecting.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner.
So I'd just like to make a, a quick comment on the insur, the health insurance and as it relates to the increases that we saw this year. When we look at what we are seeing with the state health insurance plan, where the premium increases are somewhere up to 36% this year is unfortunate, and we've been fortunate with our partner Accra Shore to ensure that, to be able to supply our employees and staff with the same insurance year over year without major increases that the state has received. And also, on the prescription side, where we opted to keep the GLP drugs in the form, in the formulary to make sure that all of our employees were kept whole year after year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, please add tab 6, 6A to the agenda. 7, 7A Award of Contract Reports. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Sure.
Yes, I had a comment. To our Plan and Property Director, thank you so much for your leadership in helping us to award vision in school 5 and the playground be completed. I noticed in the contract to, the project is done. Thank you.
If I could, if I could comment on that. Mr. Malanis took me, took me on a tour, and I went to see the playground, and I was pleasantly surprised with how it's changed over there. But we actually went inside the building, where they're doing air conditioning project, and that project's really moving along quicker than we thought it was going to move. So I think they might be cool in, in the fall, correct? Which was, if you remember, we had two to go, to finish, 5 and 12. 12 is definitely going to be up and running for the start of school, knock on wood, and 5 looks good, too.
Thank you, Mr. Malanis. We've been waiting for a long time, so we're, we're there, and we're finally, you know, getting to the finish line. So it's much appreciated and your work and, with your team does not go unnoticed. So thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner.
So I'd like to, I do recall us talking about this in Plant and Properties and 5 and 12. I thought also 19, is 19 scheduled to be operational during the fall? Thank you, Mr. Malanis. I also have another question on tab 7 in regards to the purchase of the electrical vehicles under the NJDEP grant. I don't know exactly what page it is, but, Mr. Kennedy, how much of the grant, approximately, how much of the grant covers the cost of the vehicle purchase? 50%? 75%? 25%?
How much does the grant cover of that? No, it covers...
The whole, the entire amount?
They, they caveat that you have to turn in a diesel vehicle, get rid of a diesel vehicle, and it gets replaced by an electric vehicle. But they, they buy them for us. It's been a little slower in receiving the vehicles than we were anticipating, but...
Okay, so basically, the grant pays for the entire cost of the vehicle as long as it's electric?
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Are there any additional questions for tab 7, 7A? Seeing none, hearing none, please, Ms. Kennedy, please add tabs 7 and 7A to the agenda. Next is our committee reports presented by Chairman Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Accounting Meeting Committee met on July 9th. The committee was briefed on the ongoing negotiation meetings with the EEA and the EASC. The discussion included offers, counteroffers, and a three-year cost out of proposals under recently announced Funding Formula statutes regarding maximum and minimum increases and decreases in state aid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tab 9, Claims List, are there any questions or comments from the board in regards to our claims list? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kennedy, please add tab 9 to the agenda. All right, there seemed to have been a setup, because this is a long tab 10. But we're going to go through it. All right.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I just want to make a comment in relation to how smooth the graduations this year were, and I want to recognize the IT department and in, in particular, Mr., why am I forgetting your name, because I've known you for over 25 years? I want to recognize Mr. Marcell and the advancement in equipment that in the past we used to have to rent the equipment to be able to put on that production, and now we've been able to do that in-house, and I think that's a great achievement. So I just want to recognize the IT department and along, under the direction and leadership of Mr. Marcell. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for recognizing the department on an excellent job they've been doing and continue to do. All our mics are working, so we're good. We're happy. Somebody's not here to talk about it, so we're, we're not going to say anything. All right, so we have a very long tab. So Resolutions, amended resolution appointing Child Specialized Hospital to provide occupational and physical therapy services to district students. Tab 10. Tab 10A, Public Agency Compliance Officer for 2025 school year. Tab 10B. The appointment of our Board of Education hereby approving Melanie Padilla Supervisor of Guidance to be assigned as the 504 Officer for Elizabeth Public Schools for 2025, 2026 year. Tab 10C, Assignment of the Affirmative Action Officer for 2025 school year, 2026, 2025, 2026 school year. Be it resolved that Samuel Chan be assigned as the Affirmative Action Officer for the Elizabeth Public Schools for 2025, 2026. Tab 10D, India's Independence Day, which is actually celebrated on August 15th of each year, so we want to recognize that. Tab 10E, Consent for Transfer of Liquor License, which the location will be 200 feet away from the Elizabeth Public Schools. Tab 10F. Board of Education Resolution, this is the second reason, reading of the following new policy, revised policy, regulation, or bylaws to be approved, which is policy expectations of conduct of interest, interest elastic competitions and events, policy for Special Education Parent Advisory Board, policy for regulation of the Special Education Parent Advisory Board, policy for personal illness, injury, health, and hardship, policy for attendance, absences, and excuses, policy for HIV, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying, policy for vandalism and violence, policy for intervention referral services, general, and then general education students, and policy bylaws for the orientation and training of board members. Tab 10G. Essex, Board Resolution to Appoint Essex Regional Education Services Commission Home Instruction Services for 2025, 2026 school year. Tab 10H, Union County Education Services Coordination Transportation Services for this school year. Tab 10I, Agreement for Professional Services, Union County Education Services Commission 2025, 2026. Tab 10J, Union County Education Services Commission for Non-Public Security Aid Program. Tab 10K, Union County Education Service Commission, Special Education Tuition Rates and Other Service Agreements are in this resolution, 10K. 10L, Union County Education Services Non-Public School Technology Initiative Program. Tab 10M, Union County Education Services Commission, Non-Public Schools Textbook Program. Tab 10N, Union County Education Services Commission, Chapters 192 to 193 Services. And that's really talking about the certain, Chapter 193 NJSA 18A, colon, 46A, laws of 1977, Chapter 129, requiring that the state and local community identify and provide auxiliary and handicap services for students who attend non-public schools. 10O, Payment for Unsic, Use, Unsi, Unused Sick Days for the, a number of employees who have either retired or resigned. Tab 10P, Payment for Unused Vacation Days for the same. Tab 10Q, NJISA Membership, again, congratulations, Judy Fitz Johnson. Tab 10R, Requisition for Taxes. Tab 10S, Approval of Annual Extension for the Existing Student Transportation Contract with Valani Bus Company. Tab 10T, Approval of Annual Extension of Existing Student Transportation Contract with Shore Vans Incorporated. Tab 10U, Approval of Annual Extension of Existing Student Transportation Contract with Durham School Services. Tab 10V, Approving Annual Extension of Existing Student Transportation Contract with DMZ Signature Transportation. Tab 10W, Approving Annual Extension of Existing Student Transportation Contract with DMZ Signature Transportation Incorporated. Tab 10X, Increased Minimum Bid and Quote Thresholds for our Purchasing Agent, which, who, who is a, who possesses a qualified purchasing agent certificate. The State Treasury in Consultation with the Governor and Pursuant to the NJSA 52, colon, 34-7, NJSA 18A, 18A-3, has increased the bid threshold amount for school districts with qualified purchasing agents from 44,000 to 53,000 effective July 1st, 2025. Tab 10Y, Approving Annual Extensions of Existing Student Transportation Contract with Route 22 Bus LLC. Tab 10Z, Renewed a Contract with Systems Electronics to Provide Fire Alarm and Fire Signaling System Testings, Maintenance, and Inspection for All District Schools. Tab 10AA, Union County Education Services Agreement, Amended Tuition Contract Agreement for Alternative High Schools. for Alternative High Schools. Tab ten BB, Approving Entry into Contract with Children Literacy Initiative to Provide Job-Embedded Coaching and Professional Development in Early Literacy for Teachers in Bilingual and ESL Classrooms. Tab ten CC, Transfer of Maintenance Reserve Funds. Tab ten DD, Transfer of Capital Reserve Funds. And we got through it, all right. Board Members, are there any questions or comments to our resolutions? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add tab ten, tab ten DD, to the agenda. Also at this time, just want to recognize Ms. Jamie, I'm gonna mess this up. Betances, I got it. Family Engagement Specialist from Span, who is going to be partnering with this district to work with our family, so we want to thank you for your presence tonight. Let's give her a big round of applause for coming out tonight. Thank you so much. So with that being said, want to thank everybody who is here, who have joined us this evening, and also to all the retirees and folks who have served many years in our district, who was on the agenda to retire this year. I want to thank you for your many years of service and dedication to our district for all the hard work that you've done, and to all the people who lost someone special this summer. We read out about six names here in our district that are near and dear to us, but many of you who may have had any loss in your families. Our prayers and hearts go out to you, and you know, definitely reach out and talk to someone, and you know, grieving is important, so take the time out to grieve and make sure to make yourself a priority and implement self-care in your life, that's so important. At this time, President, I'm requesting a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt to the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of legal matters, specifically workman's compensation, CP, MR, JR, DC, SF, LL, LR, Legal Settlement, EBOE versus GG, and SS versus EBOE, personal matters such as interviews, personal report, personnel report, award of contract, specifically substitute special education personnel, roof replacement at Bowridge Finance Academy. Mr. Malanis, you have your hands full. The board will reconvene in public and take formal action. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion to go to private?
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Incavas Bastan.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Nera.
Yes. Thank you. We will see you after we come out of private. Thank you so much, everyone.
Happy birthday to the man himself.
Happy belated birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
Happy belated again, Mr. Kennedy, and cheers to many more years.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Again, ladies, congratulations on your new roles and your new responsibilities. Thank you for stepping up and, you know, taking on the responsibility to help elevate our district. We really appreciate you and we're looking forward to the future. All right. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second it.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa on the full agenda.
Yes, good night. Good night.
Yes, good night.
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 Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I add those items to the agenda.
At this time, Superintendent will present the HIB report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Board Policy 5131.1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying in the New Jersey statute 18A:37, the results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, and other actions taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on June 17, 2025, and through July 15, 2025, our school counselors, school-based social workers, and supervisor of anti-bullying have completed 26 HIB investigations. Of these investigations, eight cases were founded for HIB as per New Jersey law. There were 11 males, 17 females, 27 regular education students, and one special education student that were the alleged victims. There were 21 males, 24 females, 43 regular education students, one special education student, and one non-student that were the alleged offenders. Of the eight cases founded for HIB, one case was founded based on religion, one case founded based on gender, and seven cases founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were 10 skill development lessons, 19 counseling sessions, two referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, one change of classroom, one change of school placement, two administrative counseling sessions, seven in-school detentions, 15 parent conferences, one referral to outside agencies, four out-of-school suspensions, and three cases are continuing to be monitored. The HIB statute further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting after board members receive the initial report for HIB investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the 61 cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on June 17. In order for you to do so, the investigative summaries from those investigations which were reported to you at the last board meeting have been provided for your review prior to voting. And this completes this month's HIB report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. May I have a motion to approve and second the entire agenda?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda, the entire agenda?
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made, properly seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Yeah, just a reminder, Resolution 10F, there's a policy in Regulation 12221. We're not voting on that resolution.
We're going to table that.
Correct, we're tabling it, yeah.
Is there any other policies?
No, the rest of them are, we're going to vote on.
Thank you.
Barbosa on the full agenda.
On the full agenda, correct with the additions?
With the additions, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, congratulations.
And a tabling of the policy.
Correct.
Correct, and we're tabling.
Carvalho?
Yes, congratulations.
Chevrez?
Yes, congratulations.
Jacobs?
Yes, congratulations.
Concavas Pastana?
I would like to abstain on tab 7A, and yes to the rest, and congratulations, ladies.
Rivera?
Yes, felicidades.
Nara?
Yes, I'm very excited for you. Congratulations, and wishing you all the very best.
So, the entire agenda has passed, including the additional items that were added.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
It's a great day.
Are there any comments and concerns from our board members?
Mr. Nara?
Yes.
Mr. Mahaldr!
I gotta love you. Yes, sir.
Last week, on last Thursday,
Yes.
we observed a momentous occasion.
Absolutely. Happy birthday to the man himself.
Happy belated birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
The fedora king. (laughing).
Clearly, we have a lot of fun here.
Happy belated again, Mr. Kennedy, and cheers to many more years.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Again, ladies, congratulations on your new roles and your new responsibilities. Thank you for stepping up and, you know, taking on the responsibility to help elevate our district. We really appreciate you, and we're looking forward to the future. All right. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second it.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa?
Yes, good night.
Carvalho?
Yes.
Chevrez?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Concavas Pastana?
Yes, enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone.
Rivera?
Yes, good night.
Mr. Nara?
Yes, please enjoy the rest of summer, and please stay cool. Tomorrow's going to be very hot, so is the weekend, so, uh, please take care of yourselves, your families, and, uh, check our websites for all the cooling centers, um, at our city website, elizabethnj.org. Have a great night, everybody.